Uh, what do you got next?
Well, I want to sell my house.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, thank you.
Considering, I mean, just in the ma- just in this past year, I gained $21,000 on my house. Really?
We bought our house, which was brand new in 96.
We got 20 seconds, 20 seconds, 20 seconds. Remain on.
I've already put up.
We got 10 seconds, 10 seconds.
Good luck trying to sell it for that.
Yeah.
Well, I would, yeah, I would buy it.
One second. We want to welcome you to our Leavenworth City Commission meeting. We ask that you turn off for silent cell phones. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 6:00 p.m., in midnight, and also available for viewing on YouTube. At this time, we have the Fledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, number one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Amen.
First item on the agenda, consideration of previous meeting minutes from July 25, 2023, regular meeting. There's no questions or comments. At this time, I entertain a motion.
I motion to approve minutes from July 25, 2023, regular meeting.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Next item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance, number 8220, approval for special use permit for two-family dwelling at 500 and 502 Ponys Street.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, as a quick reminder, both these items have to deal with title or bank lending issues, dealing with existing duplexes and single-family zonings. So, we've seen a couple of these come through as these properties are bought and sold and financial institutions are asking that they get a special use permit so that they are essentially allowed by that zoning right. So, you'll see a couple more of these, my guesses, before the end of the year, but there's been no changes to these, no public comment or anything since the first consideration reading.
Any questions or comments?
Nope.
If not, this requires a roll call. Sorry, with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
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 Pass 5-0. Next item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance, number 8221, approval of special use permit for two-family dwelling at 507 and 509 Ponys Street.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, again, there have been no changes since the first reading. This follows the same i- as the item before.
No questions or comments. This also requires a roll call, starting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 All right, go pass is 5-0. Next item on the agenda, new business. This is open to the public. Anyone that wish to address the commission with any comments? Ms. Eric, do we have anyone signed up?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, countywide transportation study presentation.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is an exciting night for the future of transportation in and out of Leavenworth County, as well as inside Leavenworth County. This is the presentation of the final draft report of Priorities for Progress, which is the countywide transportation study. Just very briefly, the reason this is so important is the county competes for state and federal transportation dollars over the next 10, 20, 30 years. Having a combined voice is what we were told puts you in the best position to receive those types of funds and really do projects that help the future of economic development in the county. And so, tonight, from Kimley Horn is Jeff McCarrow to present the final draft report of that. He still has four other presentations after tonight, all the way till the middle of September at the different cities in the county where we're first. And so, you won't see anything back here till probably October when we ask you for a resolution of support for that, but at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff McCarrow from Kimley Horn.
All right, thank you. Mayor, members of the commission, pleasure to be again with you. It's been a few months since I was up here last time. We spent a lot of time going into some details on how we're setting up and evaluating this. We won't do that again tonight. I do want to do a quick recap of the project and the engagement that we went through through this process, because early on, what we did hear from a lot of people was they wanted to be sure it was transparent, how we went through this exercise. We'll talk about the list of projects that we ended up evaluating, the tool that was available and is still available online for you to put and kind of weight your own criteria and where you see projects lie, then our recommended action items for you and some conclusion statements. So, with that, again, our process, we started out going down two paths, not only looking at the criteria of how we would evaluate the projects, but also then, at the same time, the actual definition of what projects we're going to evaluate, because we've had more than 20 years' worth of studies and a lot of projects that overlapped it. Today, we're here at the end, which we're really at that final report stage for you. Reports have been submitted to the staffs of the various cities, to KDOT to market to review and provide comments. We've integrated those comments into this final document for you to look at. The full report, as well as the executive summary, is available online for everyone on at prioritiesforprogress.com. You can find that here. An executive summary has also been emailed out to the staff. Hopefully, they can forward it on to you well if they haven't already. As we go through this process, we did have a lot of public engagement. We met with key stakeholders twice, once in the fall of 2022, and again then in the spring of 2023, with various industries at that process. Also had different rounds of public meetings, two that were hybrid, in-person and virtual, that occurred in late 2022, and then a virtual online meeting in the spring of 2023. And then, this is our second round that we're just starting of our elected officials briefing. Again, I was here late spring, going over several things with you at that time. This is where we started at, the initial projects that were in the county, and this was shared last fall with everybody. Lots of previous studies. We had a lot of overlapping corridors, we had corridors and new alignments, and we gathered really a lot of feedback from everyone through this process. And that led us to this consolidated project map of 43 projects that we were evaluating with a total cost, if you're to build them all today, of 1.5 billion. So, you can see that there's quite a range of projects out there, ranging from, well, under half a million dollars is some of the project sizes, to well over several hundred million dollars for some of them. So, a wide range that we looked at. When we looked at the projects, we looked at several different evaluation criterias, and we talked about those last time with you, from traffic to safety, to access to amenities and jobs, equity, sustainability and resiliency, several factors to evaluate these with. And then, we started to look, and this is really what came through the tool and that online process that everybody could look at, what are your priorities and how do they weight them? So, what did we hear from the public on what was important? What did we hear from, you could go in individually and weight them to see what, how that changed things, but also when we take a look at those other funding sources, Mid-America Regional Council, Kansas DOT, US DOT, what they prioritize, how do your projects stack up with that? Reason being, if you have a project you love, but it doesn't meet any of the criteria the US DOT is looking for, there's no reason to advance that project for that funding source. So, the interactive tool that was online, I know it's a little small here and it remains online, really let people put in the weighting of those different criterias that they could evaluate, what was important to them, be it safety, be it economic development. They could break out the projects if you wanted to into different types, interchanges, new roadways, even multimodal pedestrian bicycle transit type options and weight those. You could pre-populate. We actually started it out with the population of what people see today, but we could also allow you to say, or if we're looking at these different funding sources, what were those criterias? So, you could see that visibly through that. Which brings us to this. We'll highlight some of those top programs which we would suggest kind of rises up on the different funding sources and applications. This fall, late this fall, in October, KDOT will be coming out with their local consult meetings to find out and get input from the communities on what they want to see evaluated. Our recommendations of the projects that scored the highest included K-5 improvements, connecting over towards I-435 and the bridge, that additional enhanced access in from the east. The K-7 interchanges, they've been at-grade intersections and been talked about for well over 20 years of upgrading some signals there. There's a bypass on the west side of Leavenworth to provide a relief valve to K-7 coming through as well, that scored very highly on this process. And then, the Eastern Gateway Project, which has been talked about as that new connection over to 4th or 5th and 152. Well, I do want to caveat this one, we're talking here about KDOT's pipeline development, looking for, this is such a massive project that those next steps is really to go after an additional federal grant to advance the planning of that project. It's not a project that is ready to compete for construction dollars. There's just too much to be done to do it, so if you want to evaluate that, there are steps to go through there. And we'll talk about that next, actually, when we look at the US DOT competitive grants that are out there. Eastern Gateway is one that actually rises to submit for a planning study through what's called the RACE Grant Program. That's, will require, though, a lot of support from KDOT, from MoDOT, and it's also going to be important to gather active political support, your US representatives and your US senators to get behind that project, to advance it for. And we're not saying where those people are, that wasn't our part to reach out to the elected officials or necessarily. We've had some conversations with MoDOT and KDOT both. I think there's ways to go with those agencies to gather a lot of support here, given that we've got another river bridge that's going on right now. The other grant room for funding that's out there is Safe Streets for All. Actually, this is one in which you've, were awarded a grant this year, the city of Leavenworth was, and you'll be moving forward on a project with that. Once that gets through, though, that's called the Action Plan for Safe Streets for All, you'll be able to compete for additional funding from the federal government for improvements in the city. So, you're going to be well positioned in about a year to go after that. And that's that implementation grant. It's last on that bullet. Through Mark's funding programs, they have what are called the STPG and STP set aside. These are the Service Transportation Block Grants that they have. For most, for you here, most of that funding will flow through the Mid-America Regional Council. They will issue a call for projects next spring, and the projects that we saw that you would score the best on there included K-5 improvements to the south 158th and 155th Street corridor, although that would not include what Basar's discussed about a new interchange with I-70. That's part of the Kansas Turnpike. These are federal funds, and federal funds can't be used on the Kansas Turnpike, just for a lot of technical reasons. I'm happy to answer a few questions if you have on that, but basically, it wasn't built with federal funds. It's not quite to federal standards, the way interstates typically are operated, so if you put in federal dollars, you've got to upgrade all of I-70. So, they don't want to do that. We've also looked at the Tonkinoxi-Eisenhower corridor improvements, providing better connectivity, if you will, from Lansing to Leavenworth down to Tonkinoxi, and then continued looking at some of the transit service in the Leavenworth-Lansing area. This might be a repeat here, actually. Some additional programs is 158th Street. This is for Mark's PSP program. This is actually a planning program that they have. There'll be a call for projects next spring on that. One of the corridors we have is 158th Street that actually connects up to 20th Street McIntyre Road. This was a project that was identified to provide a parallel route to K-7. There's an opportunity, it's still at a very high level on the planning stage, so I think a good option to look for there is to start to move this forward into the PSP program, which is their Planning Sustainable Places, to really show the connectivity between Basar, Lansing and Leavenworth, and providing those routes and coming up with a clear vision for that route. And the last one would be to the south of Kansas River Crossing. There's a lot of interest to look at improved access from Leavenworth down to DeSoto and the Panasonic Battery Plant for access to jobs and the economic impact and capturing some of that growth. Right now, our crossings of the Kansas River don't really come out in a good location. One comes in DeSoto, one comes up kind of in a residential neighborhood, the other one just in a small downtown. It's not lined up to really provide good access if you think of getting down towards that area. And there's also talk in Johnson County about the bypass, kind of an outer loop, if you will, system somewhere in that region too. So, it's time to advance those plans and start thinking that this is an opportunity for the county, the communities here, the city of DeSoto, Johnson County, to collaborate on really forming that unified vision. With that, we've got to hit the high levels there. There's a lot of information there. I do want to conclude that we've had extensive public stakeholder and elected official outreach. The projects were evaluated based on defined metrics that align that scoring criteria from different funding sources as well as outreach. And as Paul indicated earlier, this really positions Leavenworth to speak as one voice to advocate for these proposals. So, when you go into the local consult, which is scheduled for October 17th, down in Lenexa for this area of Kansas City, you can really speak with one voice and say, these are our top priorities that we want you to consider. Say that, and we mentioned this last time, that previously at some of the local consult meetings, nobody has talked much about anything in Leavenworth. So, we'll go to those meetings, KDOT will host them, and they don't hear much from anybody, or they hear from one person. To bring this type of investment that you've done adds weight to that process. Not guarantee that you'll get selected, but it certainly helps raise your discussion with them. So, with that, certainly here for any questions you might have this evening, and excited to be here after about a year, year of work.
Thanks, Mrs. Jeff.
Yes, I have, I have a couple of questions. Well, it looks like to me, I mean, there are several options there, and I know that there are certain people in our community that have really been pushing the Eastern Gateway. And to me, that looks like the longest-term project out there, as far as the cost and the logistics and all of that, but we really do need something, and to me, it looks like the 158th McIntyre or K-7, K-5 would be a really good, really good thing for us to support, to get it going, so that we have something, because we've had such a need for such a long time to be able to get to the major highways in Kansas City that we haven't had. Of course, DeSoto is important too, I think, but DeSoto's, we drive there about once a month for VFW, but it's like a mess. You know, there's the highways there are not that good, so I know that they need a lot of, a lot of work, but, but that's, that's just a couple of my thoughts, just making it the low-hanging fruit is what I'm thinking, you know, to get, to get us started on this process, and then if we need the Eastern Gateway, we can work toward that later. That's just my thoughts as Commissioner.
I think the most exciting thing about the action steps is that each project identified has an action step that we can take in like the next six months. So, we can parallel seek the RACE Grant for the Eastern Gateway Bridge. At the same time, we're participating in the Call for Projects in October for KDOT. At the same time, we're participating in the Mark's Spring Call for Projects, and so it's the group of stakeholders, which I'm, which I'm on, that will continue to meet and will spearhead those efforts to, hopefully, we have applications for all the projects, wherever they may be in the process.
Are the details of all of these projects, are there more details online?
Yes, there are.
That we can look at? Because I'd like to compare the.
Yep, we have everything for the detailed descriptions of the projects. You can see them mapped out. You could also.
The expenses and everything.
The expenses, the cost estimates are there for you, and some of those user benefits and the benefits that we talked about last time.
Good.
Any other questions or comments?
No, not right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, sir.
It's exciting.
Next item on the agenda, Resolution B-2342, Camp Leavenworth, a special event street closer for possession and consumption of alcohol.
Sir?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, before you this evening is a consideration for a resolution approving the special event known as Camp Leavenworth, which would close motor traffic vehicle, or motor vehicle traffic to specific streets and allow for the possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor. The streets that will be closed are the same as last year, so to recap, that would be Cherokee between Second Street and South Esplanade, Choctaw between Second and South Esplanade, and South Esplanade from Delaware to Third, Three Mile Creek. By approving this resolution, it would allow the city to work with the local alcoholic vendors to acquire the appropriate temporary liquor licenses for the event. The alcohol-friendly area will be clearly marked and roped off for the festival as well.
Which vendors will we be using, Mr.?
For what?
For alcohol, which vendors?
I do know that our local breweries are involved. Of course, we'll have a vendor as well, and I believe that's local as well this year. Ross's. Ross's out on 20th Street, who did it last year too, so.
Yeah, they did it last year.
And then, I think we have Will Cott and maybe another one potentially signed up, so.
Leavenworth.
Yep. Working, working through a lot of the licensing on the microbrewery, local microbrewery thing is new to us, and so, there's a lot of hurdles with Kansas ABC, but we have a Camp Leavenworth update on the study session next week, so we'll make sure we include all that information.
Okay, appreciate it. Any questions or comments?
No.
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of Resolution B-2342 as presented.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance to levy special assessment for nuisance abatement costs.
It's me again. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, before you this evening is a request for consensus for the first consideration ordinance to levy special assessments for unpaid nuisance abatement costs. The city code provides the tools for the city to abate nuisances such as mowing, tree removal, lot cleanup, and also allows for the addition of administrative churches. The city code also provides for the assessment of the city's costs for these abatements. Property owners were invoiced for the costs incurred and were given at minimum 30 days to make payment for those costs. In many cases, a lot of these properties have had to have multiple abatements. Staff is seeking consensus to place the special assessment ordinance on first consideration in order to recover the city's costs. I have to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments?
No.
Well, this requires a consensus.
So, I'm sorry, just real quick, so, direct impact, then, if we approve this, is going to be, what's going to change exactly from just everything that the way it is today? Can you provide any more details on that?
So, what would occur would be, once the ordinance passes second consideration, we would then file that with the Register of Deeds and the county clerk. Those amounts would then be assessed on their tax rolls for the 2023 tax fees.
Gotcha.
Tax payments that they will make next year. There is actually still time for property owners to make payment to avoid tax assessment right now, that they don't have much time, but they, they can call the city and they can work with us and we can get them taken off this list.
Perfect.
But that is what would occur.
Okay, thank you.
So, the idea here isn't to, isn't to turn around and put a, what's called, on the property.
A lien.
A lien on the property.
Correct. It would go to tax assessment.
This would go straight to tax. Good, thank you.
Technically, as soon as the tax bills become due, they become a technical lien on the property at that point. Appreciate it. We've got a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, staff report of the Arts at the Park event briefing.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is the city manager's staff report. I've asked Michaela Fitzgerald here tonight to talk about LV Arts at the Park, given event briefing. I did want to hit on a couple of things from my end, from staff's end. As it relates to the comprehensive plan, and one of the reasons I thought it was important to talk about this new event is, an event like this is mentioned multiple times in the city's 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Under Community Identity, the comp plan identifies historic and cultural resources, encouraging residents to participate in social and cultural and economic life in the community, to explore partnership opportunities for visitors and visitor promotion, which I believe this accomplishes. Under Building Environments, one of the goals is to provide natural spaces and facilities for effective, active and cost-effective strategies, which I think this falls under. Promoting the use of community facilities, like parks, as third places. Third places are meeting places for the community to come together and meet their fellow citizens or visitors to the community, where residents of all ages can connect with programming and services. And then, finally, under the Healthy Community section of the comp plan, talking about public health and well-being, supporting a healthy community by promoting healthy development and behaviors and well-being for people by providing recreational and educational resources that promote healthy lifestyle. So, this event, I think, meets a lot of the criteria of those sections of the comp plan, and so I asked Michaela here to talk about this event that's new to the city.
I love that, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Michaela Fitzgerald. I'm the co-founder and president of a nonprofit organization called LV Arts. We're a 501(c)(3) organization, still in our infancy. We've been incorporated for just over two years, and ultimately, our vision is to grow into a center for the arts, a dedicated center for the arts in Leavenworth, but we understand the importance of growing support and community before we kind of take on those overhead costs and things of a building. So, we, we're trying to do that through events and workshops and things of that nature, but I love all of those checkmarks that we hit with, with the arts, because they are so important. And so, I brought some packets with me this evening that will help to kind of talk about what the event, what we hope to offer with the event. It's called LV Arts at the Park, and we hope to make this an annual event. We're exploring it this year at Stubby Park, though, you know, we'll see how it goes this year and if that, you know, meets our needs, and if it goes well, then perhaps we do it again at Stubby Park next year, or we might consider, you know, doing it at other parks as well. We applied for a grant through the KCIC, Kansas Creative Arts Industries Commission. They're through now the Chamber of Commerce, and so they have a lot of money to give to the arts and arts programming. I don't know if I should say how much we got from them. Is that of interest to anyone? But, well, we received $7,100, and that was great.
That's nice.
Yeah, it was very nice, and it's a matching grant, so our organization is also putting money toward that, some of our own that we fundraised, some that we've received from sponsors, so that has been wonderful. We received a little bit from the CVB, which was great, and we also received a grant from Walmart, the store 26 here in town. They gave us $2,000, and I thought that was wonderful. So, it is, you know, we are finding that buying supplies and things like that, you know, costs do come up, so, but we feel confident that we're going to be able to put on an awesome event for the community. So, I guess I could kind of take you through the packet. The first part just talks about who we are as an organization. We are an arts and humanities group, so we're not really just, you know, advocating for pictures on a wall that seem sort of very stagnant and maybe boring to some. This is very much so like arts integration and immersion, and we think that our community could definitely benefit from an organization like ours. You know, we have arts businesses and things of that nature, and we have had, you know, arts groups that have offered classes in the past and have kind of fallen by the wayside for one reason or the next, but we are, again, an arts and humanities group, so we're offering services, you know, to the whole person, not just the art lover. For instance, on September 17th, we are actually offering another event called Words Save Lives, which is an event that supports people either directly or indirectly impacted by suicide through the arts. It was a really.
Excuse me, what date is that?
Sorry, September 17th. It should be a Crancers. We're still kind of in the planning phases, but I think that's what we're going to do. It's a Sunday evening. It was just a really positive, successful experience last year, not to get too off track, sorry, guys, but I just want to express that, you know, we, we are an organization that is looking to really be invested and embedded in the community, not only through arts, but also humanities programming as well. So, that's enough about that, but you can always check out our website too, as far as the other things that we're, we're wanting to offer. So, back to the event. It's on August 26th, on Saturday. We're hoping to go from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Pray for good weather. We are inviting 14 artists to come and display their work, and it will be for sale. Initially, we wanted to accommodate them by putting up tents for them and, you know, so it's kind of like a low-hassle experience, but we were finding that that is going to be too much on our plate, and so we've reached out to the artists and they're going to bring their own, which is typical of this type of event, and maybe next year, we can explore, you know, different options, but we definitely wanted safety to be a first priority, you know, for visitors, and so, it's all good. We have a featured artist, Angie Pickman, who's from Lawrence. She's, you know, nationally recognized. She's, you know, nationally recognized as a paper cutting artist, and we did a workshop. Commissioner Bowden attended that, which was awesome, to help kind of promote the event. But, so her work will be not only on display, she'll be, you know, showing her process and educating visitors on, you know, how she makes her work for a little piece of that time, and then, of course, all the artists will be selling their work. We have artists from Leavenworth, Fort Leavenworth, I think Overbrook, Lawrence, Winfield, I think? They're from around the state of Kansas, and hopefully it'll just expand next year's... Excuse me, well, we're going to have, if I, we can flip to the back, because this is pretty exciting, live performances, live stage performances all day. We, you know, are paying for a live, you know, stage, it's a, oh gosh, hydraulic stage with a cover, so it's like a heavy-duty, you know, stage. And we hope to have that come through the park, through the Land Nation parking lot or the alley kind of just to the south of that establishment, so hopefully there's this little slight hill for them to get down, but again, some of this is just going to be, you know, on the fly, planning a little bit, just, you know, if they're able to get in that position, hopefully that's where we're going to have them. Mr. Pickman, do we have the map available? I'll show you guys just, it's not included in the packet, oh, sorry, thank you. We've been putting together an event map, so when visitors come to the event, they'll kind of be able to navigate what we're hoping to offer. I would say most of our traffic will come from the Fourth Street location, and then we've been in contact with Vicki Cause, she owns the former Abel's Lot, and so primary parking will be there for ADA accessibility, accessible parking. They'll be able to go through the barricade, you know, hitting VEs, and then they'll be able to park in the parking lot that's dedicated to Stubby Park, there's probably 11 spots there, or drop off if that helps individuals get to the park more easily. Let's see. So again, back to the stage, I mean, we are offering lots of different performances from local arts organizations. We also have invited Mr. Stinky Feet to come, because who doesn't love Jim Cosgrove? You know, so that'll be fun. And then the grand finale will be a big dance party, and much like you see at the color runs, they're very trendy, we have some colored powder. I don't know as if we'll distribute to a crowd, but we have sort of designated powder distributors, so I don't think it should get too out of hand, and we also would like to offer people some sunglasses, because I think I've seen that in the color runs, just to, again, as another form of, you know, just safety or security feeling. So that'll be fun, that'll only last maybe 30 minutes of people kind of dancing and doing the fun powder stuff. What else can I tell you? There's just so much, and for this, for us to take on something this big, you know, we have a volunteer board of eight people, we have just over 51, 50 members, we have 51 members, and we've kind of slated, you know, volunteers for this event. We're looking at like close to 100. I mean, if we were like every slot filled and looking good, you know, there's a lot of people involved in this. Again, for our small organization, we feel really confident that we're going to be able to put on a, you know, quality event, but it is a pretty big undertaking, and for all of us to be volunteers and have families and jobs, it's, you know, it's something. But we're hoping it'll be great, and we put a lot of pity on this. I think we've been in contact with the city about this event for about a year. I mean, I've reached out to Nancy Baker, is that Nancy? Yes. To kind of say, "Hey, could we partner with the city on this?" I think next year, and if we do, you know, go ahead and decide, this was awesome, and we'll do it again, you know, I'd like to see even more of our partnership grow with the city and to be able to kind of express maybe more of our needs or what we'd like to do and have more collaboration. And so, you know, some of our needs might be a little bit more easily met if we have a little bit more support there. Not that they haven't been great, but just for the first time, I think it grew into something bigger than they had expected, this city, which is fine, because we're dreamers and we think big. So it's all good, and we did have a city meeting with a lot of city entities, and everybody's on board, police as well, you see barricades there, so we prevent, you know, oncoming traffic into that one little section of the street. Art-making activities all day, what else? We've invited USD 469 to bring a bus to come, and the kids are going to be able to paint that, so fun. We're partnering with the Andrew Newton American Legion Post 94. They're going to be selling hot dogs and chips and drinks and things like that, and so there will be nourishment for our visitors. We hope people plan to stay a good chunk of the day, and we know that, you know, people will get hungry. We also have...
And there's no charge to attend this, is that correct?
No charge, it's free. It's great. For the food, they will have to purchase that. Jarvies will be out there, shaved ice, that'll be lovely. And then we also invited Leavenworth Station Brew House to offer some beverages for people watching, you know, acts on the stage. We will rope that off, although I have heard of a new law, something about just posting on a sign that says, "No beverages past this point." I talked with Jennifer Wilcott about that. That was just a new thing that happened in early July, but we'll make it very well-known that beverages should stay within, you know, that area of the stage. And in fact, that star to the, let's see, west of the stage, that's where Leavenworth will be set up, so it's really just kind of in that area. We won't have them going up the hill with any beverages or things like that, so feel good, feel good about that. What else? Art and yoga, plain air, improv, it's going to be great. We need to have t-shirts. I mean, you know, every good event does, so...
Well, great job, man. Like I said, I see the excitement and the joy, and I know you've been working on this for quite a while, so I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
Definitely looking forward to attending, and then as well. Do you need any more volunteers?
Absolutely, yes. Like I'd say, we probably have about 50% of, you know, where we'd like to be. We'd like to be, you know, looking closer to 75 to 100 people, but, you know, to volunteer. We do have a signup genius on our website and on our social media. That's kind of how we've figured to get as many people on board in a logistic, non- logistical nightmare way. But yes, you can go to the website, and there are lots of opportunities, tent building, table moving, art-making, leadership.
That is LVarts.com, correct?
It's LVarts.info.
Dot info.
Dot info, thank you for asking.
Got it.
On Facebook and Instagram. We are also partnering with NAACP. I reached out to Ms. Joanna Schultz today to kind of, you know, get their crew on board. She's aware, but I think she's been pretty busy, and, you know, just we'd like to offer a chance for those groups to get on board. Rotary, Lions, I'm trying to make my rounds this last, you know, few weeks, so, yeah, I might be calling you guys.
We appreciate it. Any questions?
No. It's exciting.
I just have to say, Mrs. Fitzgerald has a great amount of energy.
Yes.
And ever since you first came here, and just so impressive.
Yes.
Well, thank you.
I'm glad you're here. Please keep us, you know, in the back of your mind, back pocket, just thinking about maybe, you know, at some point, if there's a building that needs repurposing, or even if it's building a facility, you know, we could run a capital campaign, but we do think that it would be so wonderful for our city to have a dedicated center for the arts and humanities, you know, it just feels like a space that people can call their own and come in and out of, arts-based preschool, you know, everything, much like a library but for the arts. I feel like that would be a really cool community space, so keep us in mind.
Thank you for coming.
We appreciate you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michaela.
Thank you.
Senator, good to see you.
You too, thank you.
Last item on the agenda, the consent agenda.
Okay. I move to approve claims for July 22nd, 2023, through August 4th, 2023, in the amount of $1,805,096.94. Net amount for payroll number 15, effective July 28th, 2023, in the amount of $400,576.59. Includes police and fire pension, in the amount of $7,134.65.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Mark.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. That concludes our agenda. At this time, we want to go around the table to see if you want to have any updates.
Yeah, just a few things, if you don't mind. I've had the honor of representing the city at the International Flag Ceremony yesterday at Fort Leavenworth at the Lewis and Clark Center. That annual event welcomes or officially starts the year for the Command and General Staff Colleges. All 90 countries or 95 countries post their colors, so that was a nice event. Some good news, for the first time since 2018, we have a co-ed softball league. If anybody knows the history of Leavenworth, at one time, we had 40 teams, 45 teams. You need four full teams to have a league, and we had some very dedicated softball players rally around the city, and we have seven full co-ed softball teams, so...
Good.
So we hope to continue to grow that. That's out at Cody Park, and so they play on Tuesdays and Thursdays, starting August 29th, those seven teams. The design RFP for the Cody Park Sports Court is out. Right now, it's, the proposals are due back the 25th, so we'll do a presentation to the commission probably in September. As a reminder, we'll do some public meetings with that project as we look at the design. All the features, we finally got the final features in the kiddie pool at Woolman, just in time for the pool season to end, but they were backed up, just like all the stuff is, but the kids really like to slide into the kiddie pool at Woolman and some of the spray features, so that was just the final, final part of that. And as I mentioned, next week, we have a Camp Leavenworth update and a study session. We have, one of the other couple items is, we will have the Centennial Bridge team will be back. So you talked to them earlier in the year, staff has been meeting with them. I had an executive summary meeting last week, Parks and Recreation again, and Public Works again, so the Centennial Bridge team will be back next week to tell you and show you where they are with that project, so that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Paul. Commissioner Nicky and Mark?
No, nothing at this time.
I think that sounds exciting to have these guys back to tell us about Centennial Bridge. Again, next week, I encourage everybody to come and listen and find out what is going on up there. Additionally, I'm sure a lot of folks got it today, I received my Leavenworth County 2023 Notice of Estimated Ad Valorem Taxes. That's getting into your property taxes, folks. It includes the proposed property tax increase hearing details at the bottom of it. I would encourage everybody who's concerned about your property taxes to get a hold of this thing, it'll be in your mail, read it, see when the, see when these hearings are going to be, and take part in government. Get out there and attend these hearings. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you as well. Commissioner Mark?
Nothing else, sir. Hope everybody has a good week.
Commissioner Bowden?
I just wanted to mention another cultural event this weekend. Richard Allen Cultural Center and Museum is sponsoring Jazz by the River. It is, I don't know how many years they've been doing this, but it's always just a really amazing, wonderful event. This year, it'll be at the University of St. Mary on Saturday at 6:00 p.m., the 12th. So everybody come out, it's a lot of fun. That's all I have.
Yep, thank you. Want to invite everyone to Back to School event that's going to be taking place this upcoming Saturday. The event is going to be hosted by Trio in partnership with Harvest Christian Center International. It's going to be located at Walman Park, starting at 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This is a free back-to-school event, it's going to, you can come and get school supplies, have fun, dance and play some games. And also, want to give a shout-out to our state senator, Mr. Jeff Pittman, he just stopped by here to say hello, participated in our city commission meeting, and just want to wish everybody a great weekend, and prayer for our teachers and our students as they're going to be starting school next week.
Next week.
And thank you all, all the teachers that signed up, and God bless you all. That concludes our meeting. At this time, motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.